Good evening. Today is Tuesday, August 5th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lasky.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Keck.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Rosga.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney. City assessor. DPW director. Finance director. Police chief. Fire chief. City engineer. Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearing for establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for 375 River Street pursuant to PA 146 of 2000. The City of Manistee has authority to establish obsolete property rehabilitation districts within the city. The city is requesting the re-establishment of obsolete property rehabilitation district for an area in the vicinity of 375 River Street located in the City of Manistee. The affected property owner has received formal written notice of the public hearing and the public will provide, be provided with an opportunity to comment. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of this public hearing. However, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later this evening. Is there any public that would like to comment on this one? If not, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing for re-establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for 453 River Street pursuant to PA 146 of 2000. The City of Manistee has the authority to establish obsolete property rehabilitation districts within the city. The city is requesting the establishment of the obsolete property rehabilitation district for the area in the vicinity of 453 River Street located in the City of Manistee. The affected property owner has received formal written notice of the public hearings and the public will provide, be provided with an opportunity to comment. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of this public hearing. However, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later this evening. Is there any member of the public to comment on this one? Public hearing is now closed. Public hearing for establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for 87 Division Street pursuant to PA 146 of 2000. The City of Manistee has authority to establish obsolete property rehabilitation districts within the city. The city is requesting the establishment of the obsolete property rehabilitation district for an area in the vicinity of 87 Division Street located in the City of Manistee. The affected property owner has received formal written notice of the public hearing and the public will be provided with an opportunity to comment. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of this public hearing. However, the matter is on the agenda for the consideration later this evening. Is there any member of the public to comment on this one? No? Public hearing is now closed. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items. Any citizen with correspondence to be distributed to council should provide items to city clerk prior to the start of the meeting or after the meeting has adjourned, limited to five minutes. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of city council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, balance sheet, consideration of 2025, Run the Town, Pink 5K, and One Mile Memorial Walk. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of life-saving award. Aaron Snay is being recognized for the, his extraordinary life-saving actions. On Friday, July 11th, 2025, Mr. Snay observed an unaccompanied young child entering Manistee Lake. The child wandered into the deep water that quickly rose above his head. Without hesitation, Mr. Snay entered the lake and reached for the child's outreach hand. After several attempts to grasp the child's arm, Mr. Snay successfully secured and hold, and pulled the child to safety, preventing a potential drowning. Mr. Snay's bravery, quick response, and dedication to helping others exemplify the highest standards of the City of Manistee Fire Department. At this time, council consider taking formal action to recognize Mr. Snay for life-saving actions. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion on this? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Okay. This is where I present.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so, yeah, council, good evening. So, it is my honor, as, as the fire chief of the City of Manistee Fire Department, I'm honored to stand before you and recognize extraordinary act of courage and selflessness. And like Mayor said, on July 17th, 2025, 17-year-old Aaron Snay was at Manistee Lake when he witnessed a terrifying moment. A three-year-old child had wandered into the deep water and was drowning without hesitation. And without hesitation, Aaron entered the lake, risking his own safety, and after several determined attempts, he successfully pulled the child ashore, saving their life. Aaron's actions were not only brave, they were instinctive, compassionate, and life savings. When I spoke to Aaron afterwards, he simply shrugged his shoulders and said, "Yep, that's what I did." And I think that humility speaks volumes about his character and the values he represents. His courage remind us that heroes are not defined by uniform, but by action. Aaron's quick thinking and fearless response reflect the very best of our community, the kind of spirit that makes Manistee a place where neighbors look out for one another. This event also serves as a powerful reminder of the importance of water safety, especially for young children. Let Aaron's example inspire us to be vigilant, prepared, and willing to act when others are in need. Tonight, on behalf of the Manistee Fire Department, I am proud to present Karen Snay with the life-saving award, a formal recognition of his historic deed, heroic deed, and heartfelt thank you from all of us.
Thank you. Consideration of proclaiming August 2025 as United States Coast Guard Month in the City of Manistee. United States Coast Guard and the City of Manistee sharing a longstanding partnership dating back to 1879, when a life-saving station was first established in the community. Over time, this vital presence has evolved into today's Coast Guard Station Manistee, reflecting a continued legacy of service, safety, and collaboration along Lake Michigan shoreline. At this time, council could take action to proclaim the month of August 2025 as United States Coast Guard Month in the City of Manistee and authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
United States Coast Guard Month proclamation. Whereas the United States Coast Guard plays a crucial role in our national security and well-being, ensuring maritime safety, safeguarding our natural environment, and defending our nation's waterways. And whereas the bond between the City of Manistee and the United States Coast Guard is enduring rooted in establishment of Life Saving Station in 1987, which has evolved into the integral Coast Guard Station Manistee, diligently serving our residents, our guests, and our maritime activity of the Great Lakes. And whereas Coast Guard Station Manistee is an invaluable asset to our community, executing crucial search and rescue missions, upholding maritime laws, providing specialized ice rescue service, and actively engaging in numerous community programs. And whereas the United States Coast Guard asserts its birthday on August 4th, recognizing the foundational establishment of the revenue cutter service. Now, therefore, we proclaim that I, Jermaine Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Manistee, on behalf of the city council and all its citizens, do by here designate August 2025 as United States Coast Guard Month in the City of Manistee. All citizens are urged to celebrate and express gratitude for the unwavering commitment and the brave service of the men and women of the United States Coast Guard, and to recognize the profound and positive impact the Coast Guard of Manistee and our community and the Great Lakes.
Mayor, just want to say thank you on behalf of the entire station. We're going to be proud to hang this up in our halls. Thank you for the recognition, to you and the entire council, for recognizing 235th birthday of our service, and most importantly, what you do for folks assigned to our unit. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Consideration of establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 375 River Street. The city is requesting the establishment of the obsolete property rehabilitation district for an area in the vicinity of 375 River Street pursuant of Act, Public Act of 2000. A public hearing was held earlier this, in this meeting. At this time, council could take action to approve the obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 375 River Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
There a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I guess I have some.
I have a question too, yeah.
So, I know you did a presentation regarding these properties, but, you know, I can look around the city and see all these other properties that really are in worse shape, and I guess I'm not sure I understand why we focus just in that River Street corridor.
Sure. So, just, I guess, I'll get to your question, Laney, but I guess just a high-level overview of the intention of starting these Oprah districts is, the Oprah district is a tax incentive that freezes property tax at a project's or development's pre-development taxable value, right, up to 12 years. And so, in order to actually acquire that tax incentive, what must happen is, a city must designate that property to a Oprah district, and then the owner or developer must come forward and apply for a certificate, and there will be a public hearing. It will come back to city council for review of that specific certification to actually be awarded, and then go to the state and to get awarded that tax incentive. And so, as you mentioned, we had our RRC priority property selected last October. That was through surveys of all the city commissions for input, and that survey really tells me, in the Chamber of Commerce and our economic development efforts, what properties are key priorities. And those are really determined by not only their condition, but their visibility and their contribution to community vibrancy, right? And so, I agree with you, there definitely are properties throughout the City of Manistee that may be in worse condition, maybe even more blighted than the ones selected. However, those were not the ones that were selected by council, mostly due to the fact that they don't have maybe as great of a community impact due to where they are geographically located in the city. And so, we are going to redo our RRC site selection this fall. Again, it's an annual process, and so, this year, if you'd like, we can incorporate more equitable distribution of properties, and then going forward, we can really focus on those properties for Oprah moving forward. But these are also properties in which the property owners are engaged, they're communicating with us, you know, they show frustration over the fact that there's not movement on their property. And so, this is one way the city can really be proactive and show our commitment to some of these high-visibility properties that are in some of the most trafficked areas of downtown. And the reason that DDA district is really prioritized from a property standpoint is because that's where people are really looking to invest at the end of the day. I mean, I know that, you know, it's unfortunate that there might not be more investment off of somewhere like Sibyn Street, you know, but people are looking for their return on investment, and that DDA district is currently, you know, where people are looking for that investment. And we're still not at a point where our real estate market can justify the investment sometimes, especially with our historic buildings and the one that are just historically blighted and have been vacant for the last 20 years. And so, I'm happy to answer any more questions that council may have.
Are you good with that answer?
I'm digesting it.
Okay. My question is, and you answered a part of it, and I'm encapsulating all of these properties as a whole. Am I assuming that these properties are, or trying to, people are trying to sell these three properties and bring somebody new in, and that's where the incentives would come into play?
Most often, yes. The owner, if the owner has the desire, they can leverage the incentive if they put forth an application and actually have a development project.
Okay.
So, if we had an owner sitting on a property for 10 years, and then out of the blue, you know, they have a windfall of money and say, "I want to invest a million dollars, and I am now capable," they could go after that certification after the Oprah's awarded.
Okay. And what are we doing as a community to help advertise these and bring in those businesses from outside of the area? Because I don't think we're going to just suddenly find an influx of people here in Manistee that want to start a business. So, are we expanding, what are we as a community, as a chamber, doing to advertise that? How far is that reach?
Sure. So, our pillars at the chamber, right, it encompasses economic development, and part of that pillar is business attraction. And so, our business attraction efforts really are going out statewide. I, we're always creating, you know, target business lists, working with developers, right? We had our Developer Day this May, in which we invited over 20 construction slash development-related individuals into our community and highlighted 10 properties. And so, that's my job day in, day out. And so, that's part of me pursuing this process, because when I talk to people from Lansing, from Garn Rapids, who want to invest in our community, one of the biggest things a community can do to support that process is lower the amount of uncertainty and the amount of risk a developer's taking on. And so, we could wait for a developer to buy that property and put in that certificate, and then establish these districts. However, there is uncertainty that that property may or may not be obsolete, and so, they are buying that with a certain level of risk and uncertainty. And so, if we want to be proactive in getting more investment into our community and growing our community, especially on some of those blighted properties that are legacy blighted properties that have been vacant for some time, and are, you know, people would label them eyesores in our community, this is one of those proactive ways. And so, to answer your question, it really is efforts that I'm doing day in, day out. I work to work with our Economic Development Council, with Mr. Gamble, and then just continue to identify people who may be able to invest. And I get contacted, you know, pretty much every week by somebody looking to do investments in this community, and they're always asking, you know, what, "I can't make a pro forma in a, in a real estate, you know, investment sheet financially cash flow. You know, what can the city provide me on this site? Because this site alone, you can't get enough revenue per square foot to justify the investment needed to save some of these buildings." And so, that's where this comes in.
Okay. Perfect.
I've got a question too. We are just tonight, if we do, approving the district. The next stage, if a developer comes in, we, as a council who is on it, would still have the right at that point to determine whether it's, whether they're approved at all, or whether it's one year or up to the 12 years. We are not saying, oh, this is, so the abatement is not taking place tonight.
Correct.
It's just the district.
Yep. We are just creating the districts tonight, and then I worked with Mr. Bradford and Mr. Gamble to create a new tax incentive policy for the city in which, you know, anybody who's seeking to leverage an Oprah has to use that new incentive application in which they provide us financial documents and pro formas, and show us that their project is feasible and that they're capable of executing that project. And so, between a review committee that is made up of me, Mr. Gamble, and Mr. Bradford, then that goes to city council once we know, okay, this application's complete, and they have the means, and then that will go to council. Yep, and then you would have that right to say, "We feel like six, six years is justified for this invest, for this abatement." And that, that will be another public hearing to get that certificate that activates that tax abatement.
One other thing. This is new for Manistee somewhat, but I look at many other city councils' agendas and meetings, and I, I think many of the towns, in fact, Petoskey, I think was going for tonight also. So, it's probably something that developers are looking at if they are coming into a community. That's one of the things. And it's not saying that we're going to go ahead with it, but it at least opens the door that we might accept and give Oprah.
Exactly. And the point is that we're streamlining our development processes so that we are what's called development-ready, right? And so, there's been a narrative over 10 years ago that the City of Manistee wasn't development-ready, and that we had, you know, scared off developers from across the state. And so, and part of changing that narrative and saying, no, we, we want people to come to our community, invest in our community, whether it's outside individuals or people from our community, you know, you're not going to have to slog through, you know, a very long process. This is just one way we can kind of streamline that process. But again, without guaranteeing that you're going to get that incentive at the end of the day.
Now, there is no guarantee.
Yeah, there's no guarantee, and that's something I tell everybody I interact with, is this is what we have available at our disposal, but nothing's guaranteed. And so, that's something that I make sure each developer in, potential real estate investor understands coming in, is I have this laundry list of incentives that I can point to that the city has, but none of that is guaranteed.
Well, by agreeing to this, it is implied that they will get some kind of abatement. I mean, that's the realistic, realistic expectation. So, could we possibly be hurting ourselves in a way where, let's say, somebody with money wants to invest, but they're not going to pay upfront because of these Oprah districts? I mean.
Probably a risk we have to take.
Well, but it is a risk.
Because you're, they're sitting there all this time.
Yeah. That's exactly what I'm saying, is, you know, this is three at once, and, you know, I don't know how long these parcels have been on the market or anything. Do you have that information?
Yep. So, the parcels that are, so, one of the parcels is on the market, and then I'm just in conversation with the owners and developers of the other two. And so, that 187 Division Street, that's a parcel that's been on the market for over two years, you know, and then that's been marketed by more than one realtor and has had extreme difficulty getting movement on it. And so, that was one that was really critical for getting Oprah. And to, I guess, answer your question about it maybe justifying people holding back some of their capital, and that's where that proper filtering process comes in, on that upfront application. That's something that, that was why we came about and rewrote some of those city policies regarding tax incentives. We need a more thorough idea of who's coming into our community. Do you have the means to execute, and do you actually need this? And so, that's somewhere where if they have the means, and it's a great idea, and they don't need incentives, that'll show in that upfront application, not when, they're not going to be able to say, "Oh, my idea needs that tax incentive because, you know, I'm not able to get enough revenue." If they have a good idea, and it, and the property just works on its own, that should be evident in the financial documents that they provide us during the tax incentive application they provide to the city.
Laney, I'm hearing some of your concerns too. Would it be okay if we took a minute and checked in with Blake to see if there's anything that we need to know before making this decision?
I mean, I guess the other thing is, there could be a lot of reasons why the parcel isn't sold, and the prices are high.
I can't think of a reason.
Or, like you said, it's just too much to develop. I mean, I get it, and I understand the need for progress, but, yeah, I don't care for why you.
I mean, we have, there's some questions being posed right, right now, or we have concerns, or are we feeling maybe we want to move forward with this?
I can answer your question about the implicitness too of, I, I don't know if I would go as far as making the assumption that by putting a Oprah dis, by establishing a district that is implicit that the city is going to award that certification, but again, is going to be pushed on people who are looking to invest, that they still need to provide us with a good idea. They need to provide a project that is sustainable, right? And so, that is something that, again, is being communicated by myself, by the process itself, by the application process, that they still need a good idea, that by establishing these districts, we are simply saying, "It's possible." With, you know, where beforehand, it's, we don't know if it's even a viable, you know, obsolete, obsolete property, where now we're at least saying, "We know it's obsolete. This is at least a tool that's eligible." I don't think by establishing it, there's anything implicit saying that we are going to award it for sure.
But you have stated that we still have the option to deny it. So, they're really not any better off if we create a district or not, because it's still going to be up to whoever's in council to determine if.
But he has to be able to say, "This is a possibility."
Right.
And check us out. I mean, it gives him a little bit of wiggle room to get these people interested, and, you know, and if the financials support it differently, we, we take that into consideration. Now, can I just make a motion at this point? We're doing each property separately, I would assume, right?
We already have a motion in second.
I mean, and see where that goes.
We already have a motion.
If we're ready to vote.
On, on the vote.
On this one. Yes, on this first one.
We do. Oh, yes, you're right, because then you asked for questions. Okay. So, the motion is there?
Yes, we have a motion in a second for this 375 River Street.
Okay.
Are there more questions, though? I think if anybody has questions.
Okay. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 453 River Street. The city is requesting the establishment of the obsolete property rehabilitation district for an area in the vicinity of 453 River Street pursuant of Public Act of 2000. A public hearing was held earlier this evening. At this time, council could take action to approve the obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 453 River Street. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion.
No, we just voted on 375. Around 45, right here.
Okay. All right.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, have you been in that building at 453?
Multiple times. Yep. Yep. I had multiple times. I'm going in it again tomorrow, actually.
I can see where somebody going in there is going to really be considering that. That basement is horrible.
Yeah.
And I mean, I don't know where it goes down to. I was in there, you couldn't stand the smell coming up.
Yeah. Yeah, you definitely don't want to stand on the second floor either. There's holes in the ceiling that look a little sketchy.
How bad is that going to make it for when somebody tries to buy that thing, or looks at it? Do we have any hits on it at all?
No. So, it's, it's not on the market currently. This is something that the, kind of a prereq to potential sale of that property. But right now, it's not listed on the market. I believe it was a couple of years ago.
Right.
I don't know the traction that it gained there, but I, I know it's one of the oldest buildings in Manistee. So, from a historical standpoint, the HDC would really hate to see this building dilapitate further, but it is, it is a heavy lift because, because of the historic nature of that property.
Does the outsider reference and go with that?
So, that, that's a separate property. The outsider is a separate property. Yep.
If I may, we did a tour, I think, several council members through some of these properties. So, I think the big thing, Councilmember Rosga, is these have been the city assessor, the building inspector, myself, or Andrew Stafford have been through these. These require a significant investment, so it's not, it's not a typical property, but they're, we ultimately do need a very good partner to have a vision, and they're going to be putting a lot of money into these properties. And you do see it, some of these developers take on properties that they ordinarily wouldn't, and these are an example of those types of properties. We've had Fricano's come through because of this. We've had the Wander Inn, 141 Washington, which was part of the same tour as one of these buildings. They're just, they're just not economically feasible without some sort of incentive, and they're just, development is not going to happen.
Well, you'd like to see somebody buy it, because it's sitting there about 30 years now.
And going off Bill's comment, I'd be more than happy to facilitate any tours with new council members in any of our priority sites and kind of key properties to give us a better understanding for our next priority site survey. We'd be more than happy to facilitate a, a couple site tours and some of the properties that we may have had listed last year and see, you know, where they're at, and if we want to continue having those being our priority sites.
So, I guess I have a question, and without opening a whole can of worms, if this property is in this poor of condition, what have we done in the past to rectify that? is in this poor of condition, what have we done in the past to rectify that? Have we looked and gone to the owner and said, do something with this? And now we're backing down and saying, okay, now we'll give incentives. So somebody else, I mean, why does this stuff go unaddressed as long as it does? If this roof is leaking that bad that you don't want to be in the upstairs, I don't know if it's an apartment or what it is, but why have we not done anything in the past about this building?
Sure. So when it comes to real estate development, there's a, it's multifaceted, right? There's multiple reasons why something may have happened, may not have happened. There's been city initiatives in the past in partnering with M E D C or the state to have renderings done that, you know, what it's...
Well, I guess that isn't fair to ask you that. That's more our...
And ultimately, we have, yeah, we have incentives and we also have carrots and sticks we can apply to these.
That should have been addressed long before that. So that question, that's unfair of me to ask.
And that's okay. Again, there's, and there's multiple things that could lead to it. It could be ownership change and...
We're trying so hard to get past some of these buildings that are just in horrible condition. And all of a sudden, they sit 30 years and then we, well, let's just give them an incentive so they sell. Well, you know, again, not your conversation. I'm sorry. I should have left that.
No, that's okay.
But it's, it's not just sell. It's also, it's rehabilitation.
I get that.
A rebirth.
I get that.
So it's not like they're getting, and the seller isn't getting, seller isn't getting the incentive. It's the investor that's getting the incentive.
But if my home was like that, just like on Walnut, the city should be taking action to have those things repaired before we get to this point. And now he can't afford to do it, this owner.
But he's had it for 30 years and it's not been, anything's been done with it. I think 20 years since I've been here, has there been anything in that building?
Just the GOP office.
Yeah.
But there's been different people in there and different owners over the past years. Mr. Jones has been trying to peddle it for a few years now. I don't know if he had a real...
Okay. Yeah, that, that's another whole meeting, I'm sure. So my apologies.
Anybody else have anything? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Reddits.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 87 Division Street. The city is requesting the establishment of obsolete property rehabilitation district for an area in the vicinity of 87 Division Street pursuant to Public Act of 2000. A public hearing was held earlier in this meeting. At this time, council could take action to approve the obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 87 Division Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Yeah, okay. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Reddits.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Andrew. Consideration of approving the Beach Master Plan, the city in collaboration with Spicer Group has completed a comprehensive and inclusive public planning process to shape the future of the four city parks along Lake Michigan. This process has resulted in detailed master plans for First Street Beach, Fifth Avenue Beach, Manmade Lake, and North Beach Access. These plans reflect the extensive community input and professional analysis, ensuring that each park meets the evolving needs of the residents and visitors alike. At this time, council could take action to approve the Beach Master Plan, which includes the recommendations from the Parks Commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. At the time when the Parks Commission made the recommendation, and it, they're strictly a recommending body, but they did put a lot of hours, members of the Parks Commission did, because the beach is a park. And they put many hours into this. And one of the things that came out at, they, when they sent this to council, they requested that the sign be removed. They wanted a sign at the entrance, right at the end of First Street and going to the beach, which would block the view. That, I don't know if the sign would say Manistee Beach or whatever, but we do know we're at the beach. When you see the beach, there's nothing that's going to be like Michigan at that point. And then the other change that the Parks Commission requested is in that exact same area, the access point to that probably 50-spot parking lot that's directly in front of the pier, the First Street Pier, was moved to the first circle, which meant to get to that parking lot, if you're going on, just to walk out on the pier or it's primarily used for men fishing or women fishing, that just walk out on the pier directly from the car. The movement of that entrance means that you have to go around, because since it's a one-way street, you have to go around the circle, which is not a big deal under some conditions, but it's a very big deal when the car show is going on there, when the fish is in their peak, when, if there's anything going on, a wedding or anything going on at the Lions Pavilion, if there's a concert down there, you do not want to, if the guy just wants to go fish or walk on the pier, should not have to go around that circle. So I think what the comment was by the Parks was, let's just keep it as it is. Is there anything wrong with the location? And lots of times in Manistee, change can be hard. And sometimes it's best to just leave it as it is. And you can see it on this drawing, that it's probably almost a half a block. But that half a block would make you go all the way around the circle to get there.
Councilmember Lasky, you want to keep this straight? And I, we did send that to council, the draft minutes from the Parks Commission to include those changes.
Okay.
I think Mayor Sullivan, you read to include the changes as well.
Okay. Yeah, just include the changes on that, make the changes, I guess, is what the request is. Because down the road, when all this happens, if it's not changed on the actual plan, it's easy to forget that that was the intent.
We'll make sure it gets changed and we'll send the final draft to council.
Okay. And I guess, just to add, we, this plan as it is, doesn't mean it'll actually all happen. So we need to keep that in mind, too.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Can I get a repeat of who the motion in the second was? Was that Jim?
It was Jim and Wesley.
Yep.
You, you motioned?
I seconded.
He seconded. Jim made the motion.
Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. It's not, yeah, it's...
We'll have a, we'll have a comment section at the end.
Okay. Councilmember Reddits.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving an agreement with Consumers Energy for the Victorian-style ornamental streetlights. The city has requested a quote from illustration of Victorian-style ornamental streetlights, I'm sorry, the installation of Victorian-style ornamental streetlights along Maple Street between River and First Street. This project will extend the existing decorative lighting theme already in place along River, Division, and Washington Streets, enhancing both continuity and streetscape aesthetics. Consumers Energy has submitted a proposal for the work totaling $43,978.80. The current capital improvement budget allocates $43,200 for this project. At this time, council could take action to approve the Consumers Energy proposal to install ornamental lighting along Maple Street in the amount of $43,979.80 and amend the capital improvement budget accordingly. Is there a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this?
The motion did say that they'd be identical. And I think we want to make sure of that, that they are, that it did say that. So I thought we might make that statement that we don't put in. I mean, we've got stainless going up at the crosswalk there. I think that the details that they have to be the same.
These will not be exactly the same.
Oh.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. Somebody.
I'd like to point that out. But they are, they are very similar style. Consumers Energy has kind of a small portfolio of different fixtures that you can opt to add. The ones that were placed earlier this year are just the wood poles. Those don't cost us anything. We pay the energy consumption, but the construction don't, doesn't cost anything. If you want to go to one of these special poles, you have to select from one. So we've selected from their portfolio that matches the closest to what we have down River Street, but they won't be exact.
In what color will they be?
They'll be black. They'll be very similar.
And just the, the ones on Washington aren't exactly the same as the one over, but they're similar. These will be probably closer to what's on River Street than what's on Washington. But it does extend all the way to Ram's though.
And probably the average person will never even notice that they're different.
It's still...
I think that's correct, but...
Yeah.
Thank you.
When Councilmember Lasky said exact, I thought I heard.
Exactly. Thank you for qualifying that.
The motion doesn't say identical either, just so we know. Okay. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Reddits.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of designating a voting delegate for the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting. The Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention will be held September 17th through the 19th, 2025 pursuant to the provisions of the league bylaws, where requested designated by action of the governing body, one official will be in attendance at the convention as a official representative to cast the vote of the City of Manistee at the annual meeting. And if possible, to designate the other official serve as an alternate. Mayor Sullivan and Mayor Potem Smith will be attending this convention. At this time, council could take action to appoint a voting delegate and an alternate for the M M L Annual Convention. Is there a motion? Must name the voting delegate and alternate.
I make a motion to nominate Mayor Sullivan as the delegate.
As the delegate?
Say both. We were going to nominate you for the delegate. Is there a second?
We have to name, we have to name both.
I'll, I'll make a motion to nominate mayor for the delegate, delegate and...
It's all in one motion, so I need...
Wes as the alternate.
Darn.
Okay. Congratulations.
So I'm going to change that to...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Is there a second?
So is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
I see how he just didn't want to be the delegate, so he jumped right in there.
Councilmember Reddits.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roska. Motion approved.
Thank you. Now we will have a report from Ms. Molly Weststone, the city assessor.
Here we go.
This is the annual city assessors report. Do I have the clicker?
Where is the clicker?
I can do it if... Oh, betcha.
Oh, you got it? Yes.
Yep, there it is.
Okay. I need my techno here with me. We're going to start out at the thing that impacts you the most, your taxable value. So that's our first slide. Well, where's my taxable value slide? Right here. Our taxable value this year is $270,656,534. So as you can see, our taxable value in 16 years has raised dramatically. That's due to the uncappings, the number of sales we have in the residential class within the city, and the values that have soared through the last five years. So that is very good. I was very happy with that. Okay, and loose things.
The clicker?
I can move it to...
Jeez. It's the other button.
Got to go down.
And our assessed value is now in 2025, 401, 153,400. And the biggest class that we do have on the bottom is our residential class. Our industrial class stays the same. That's Morton Salt, the few industrial buildings in the industrial park. That doesn't move very much. Personal property doesn't move very much. And the commercial keeps going up and the residential keeps going up. So that's where our growth is within the city. Our March Board of Reviews keep dropping because we no longer have to approve all of the veterans, because now this is the last year. Veterans filed one and done. Unless they have a change in circumstances, they never have to file with us again. So all we're getting is basically the new ones. And this year, we had six people that came in and protested their assessments. We had five hardships for a total of 11 appeals in two days. So it was kind of a slow year. That is the end of my report. Does anybody have any questions? Well, you just want to see your taxable value and how that's grown. I mean...
Does anybody have any questions?
So of those appeals, have you, were you, or did you compromise in any way or do anything?
All hardships were granted.
Okay.
And I think they changed one assessment. So...
Is that pretty typical?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
On a home sale, I've got one question. On a home sale, to get to the taxable value, Molly, what do you use a percentage or what do you use?
Nope. The year after transfer due to Proposal A. So I buy your house this summer. Your assessed value is $500,000. Your taxable is $300,000. So in 2025, the year after the sale, the assessment cycle, my assessed value becomes my taxable value. So if I've raised your house to $600,000, then my taxable value is $600,000. Proposal A in its finest.
So who determines, let's say, you're, you're, someone sent to assess a house. Who's sending that person to, it's not a sale, it's just, they...
We try to, we look at stuff. We go out and about. You'll see our company, we contract with the city. So you will see our employees. We send a postcard that we're coming, and then they come and look at the house. We do building permits. So we will be out this fall because we have, we try to do the city in the fall because of the tours. So...
Is the city on a rotating, do you go through each district like every five or six years?
Yep. It is, correct. It is. Last year, we did what I am calling the middle school neighborhood. And then this year, we're starting on the condos again. So...
So everything, is there a set pattern that you do or you're just going back and forth between a couple districts? Or do you hit all of it?
No, I try to do everything within an E C F district so that I have equity within that district. So I don't go here and do 50, and here and do 50. I do the whole thing in E C F districts.
Do you always send a postcard? To your office, I should say.
Yes, ma'am, we do. Because if you don't want me on your property, I don't want to be there. So, and if you pull a building permit, though, or a zoning permit, though, we are going to come with no notice on those.
Okay.
Because if it is a permit, then I need to come and look. But if it's just our general looking at what's going on, I'll send you a letter.
But there's some permits, like for solar panels, that there is no increase, correct?
Solar panels are meth, al gas, correct.
So there are certain things that you wouldn't, nobody would have to go?
No. I literally, if you're pulling a building permit, I am going, my company will be there.
Okay.
Even, and we're going to count the solar arrays and we're going to put them on your card.
Okay.
Whether they're costed out or not, they need to be inventoried in on your card.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Citizens comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or other areas of...
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Letters submitted to pub, letters submitted to council will not publicly read.
David Homer, 909 High Street in the 7th District. First, Kay, let me address, so you mentioned that the civic players were, when I was president of the civic players, we were, Mr. Jones contacted us and was going to give us the building for free. We had the carpenters, we had all the work to be done on it. The only thing we did not have is any money for hazardous materials because of the asbestos to be removed. We did ask city council. At the time, this, this... At the time, the, the city has a history of not liking the civic players. Every other year, we were declined. James Grabowski was the only member that I know was on it. I don't even know how you voted. It's, it was just shot down, unfortunately. So what happens is, no one else, it shies people away. The city council doesn't want to help at that time. It pushes them away, and it's unfortunate. But, um, yeah, and it is very deteriorated. I've been to, I think, two of those properties, and it was bad at that time. But anyhow, that takes me away from my side, Dennis, I'm sorry. So it's, so to, let's talk about your guys' actions. Very unhappy camper here. Okay. According to the latest U.S. Census, Manistee has a population of 6,0241. 874 are living, are currently living in poverty, and 52% of those are elderly. I can tell you as a disabled veteran that the maximum food budget allowed for Michigan residents living in poverty is $294 a month. That's $9.80 a day and $3.27 a meal. That's maximum. Most residents here in Manistee have to live on less. Now, another report published last November states that deaths among the elderly from malnutrition has significantly increased, both in Michigan and in Manistee. When the City of Manistee forces its residents to pay $6.30 a month for recycling, it takes two meals away from its already starving elderly population. But putting my passion for this community aside, I want to focus today on the legal matters. More specifically, MCL Section 324.11502. It mandates municipalities to make curbside recycling accessible for its residents. This law authorizes Manistee to make curbside available. It does not authorize Manistee to force its recycling service onto its residents. In fact, forcing someone to use their product or service is the criminal act of coercion. On June 27th, I returned the Republic recycling can to the city hall and asked Officer Goodspeed to file a police report. Arrangements were, arrangements were made, and Republic took back their container. But I was told by city, quote, "You have the right not to use the city recycling service, but you still have to pay." This, too, is a criminal act. Any, any business or agency that charges someone for services that the person did not receive constitutes fraud. When my bill arrived by U.S. mail, I contacted the city office clerk and disputed the fraudulent charges, to which Laura Lindsay said, quote, "Residents are not allowed to dispute bills." This also violates state and federal consumer protection laws. There are nine current recycling centers in Manistee County that is free of charge for all Manistee residents. That means that this city has violated also federal antitrust laws. These criminal acts are the newest and latest additions to my complaint against this recycling program that I have been vocal about for the past six months. There is a state cap, $2 per household, $25 per year. Your $6.30, that only takes away food from my table and also violates state law MSL, or MCL 124.508A. I have been in contact with the last three months with, still, with, well, today was the first day I got to speak to Heather, with Chief Glass, if he's still here.
Your, your time's up, sir. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question regarding the beach development.
It's, you can give a statement, and somebody will answer it after the meeting, but just a comment time right now.
Is it, is it, where is it in the planning stages?
Okay.
And is there, are there safeguards against, like, just steamrolling your plans onto the people of Manistee? And it's kind of like, it was designated as the most beautiful beach in the USA, and I can't understand why we want to kind of mess with that. I can see some changes, but not all of them. So that's my question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll get it.
I have two comments to make today. The first is the fire station. Believe it or not, I am, I am just thrilled to go by that and see the work being done. One of the few jobs the city has finally hired somebody that knows what they're doing and doing it right. The, the building looks good, and they finally took all, all that old paint, which was a waste of money for the, several times it was painted. They've got it down to the natural, and they're sealing it, and they're painting the wood. So thumbs up for that. The second comment is, where did you hire this legal firm from, from Traverse City? They absolutely bungled the demolition on 210 Walnut Street. I was present at both hearings, as were some of other people that, in, in this forum, but they never took the time to do a title search. Step one. A first-year law student could have done a better job. So anyways, you've got a, we're, we're paying $200 and some dollars an hour for these folks to drive Grand Rapids to Manistee twice. And had it not been for Judge Henry to do a simple walk over to the treasures department and get this tax statement, which clearly shows that this property is owned by Safe Harbor Homes LLC. So what they, what happened is that Safe Harbor was never served because they didn't even realize they owned the property. Mr. Wade, and I'm going to muggle his name, Tatus, Tatus, whatever. He is a member of Safe Harbor Homes, and he was the person served. So had Judge Henry issued a demolition order, and let's say it actually happened, the city would be without doubt responsible to pay two times the state equalized value, which is $68,000. So we're talking a minimum, had that mess not been corrected by Judge Henry, $132,000 that you folks and, and my tax dollars would have went to support. It, it just bothers me is how do you hire people that are so incompetent? $200 and some dollars an hour, we're paying them to drive from Grand Rapids to Manistee, plus mileage, and they can't even do a simple demolition? Please. Let's, let's take a look at that contract and find somebody that can handle the job. I mentioned the last time I was here that, that the blight ordinance should be rewritten. I don't think they have the, the capacity to do that. So short, short of perhaps maybe getting some of the other communities in the general area and, and see what they've done to combat light. But the council has done little or nothing to, to support that over the years. And like I say, take a look at this legal staff. Where, where did you get them from and who hired them? What a mess.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Campbell.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Ms. Rosca.
Yes, I would like to thank Backstage Hobby and Games for donating 36 children's booster seats at the Ramsdale Theater. That was very nice. It happened quickly, and that'll help make it a family-friendly viewing. And then, I guess I would like to request doing an RFP for selection of a city real estate broker. I guess I don't feel that we're being well-served by our current. For example, I, the old Water Works building, to me, there should be a huge sign that says, you know, "For sale, open for development." And, you know, we had all these visitors all summer, and it's like a missed opportunity. And I think we need somebody who's going to market for our city at a much higher excitement level or something, with some enthusiasm. You know, even the recent sales at the Renaissance lots, those were by entities that already had parcels there. You know, we're, we're not getting anything. And I know we can do much better for our taxpayers. So I'm making, I don't know if I, I always should do this, but it's a formal request. And then, I guess, lastly, I'm really sad to hear the issues Mr. Homer has been having. And I guess I wish I would have known just a teeny bit of something, some of that was going wrong, going on. So that's it.
Mr. Grabowski.
I was in the court with Dennis, as he said. I did talk to the judge for an hour afterwards. And the problem was, nobody seemed to know that the LLC was on. And the judge said, I just went and hit the computer, and it came up, and everything was there. I mean, nobody seems to, in the form, I think Mr. Barry had the information, but he didn't relay it to the lawyer, which is a big problem. I think we, we need to talk, Bill, on that. I, I looked up the law that the judge gave me that he ruled on, and he's right. He talked to three other judges. So we know he's right. So we need to do something with this thing. I, I don't see me filing in circuit court. I, I think you go right back where you're at. I don't think the circuit judge is going to be happy. But, you know, we have a right to file.
At one point in the previous court date, the individual admitted responsibility. And I think there was, one of the tickets before it was both the LLC and the individual. I think we discussed it. I think it could have gone another way, but I think the judge obviously has his discretion to, to point out that flaw, so.
Well, he admitted responsibility because he don't even know that. The client didn't know the LLC was. And so that should have been researched, and the judge said it came right up. So there was no big problem. You know, it should have been in, in the court filing. And so if you want to sit down, I'll tell you, and I'll show you the rules that he used. The magistrate could have been ruling on it. He didn't even have to rule on it. So that's what it stands for. Thank you.
Ms. Keck.
I'm good, thank you very much.
Ms. Lasky. Your time's up, we're already.
Give you a copy of the warranty deed.
Give it to Heather, and she'll give it to us, please. Thank you. Ms. Lasky.
Well, the one thing I think, and that's on Walnut, that it was brought up at the same time we approved the, the short-term rental agreement. We need to really have a good registration form for both the short term and long term. Form was good and listed that, and had an attached copy of the property tax statement, which also would show the personal resident exemption, which, I know we don't get that extra 18 mils, but if someone's renting their home, that's an indicator that they are renting it at least. And we should make sure all those things. I think our registration form could be improved, and if it was, I don't believe that house even had a registration form. So if, we're missing a lot of that. And the registration form should state the ownership, like the entity or whatever it is, the owner, and then also the contact person. We'd have both of them, but the, you know, and they sign like an affidavit at the end that this information is true and accurate. So I think we should update our registration form for both long-term and short-term rentals.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
First, you know, to the Parks Commission, to Spicer and the DPW for the Beach Master Plan, the young lady back there that spoke. I, I too have had some of those same concerns to where too much, exactly, you know, like I think Ms. Lasky said earlier, it's a, you know, we don't like change, but we don't like things the same, too. So it's, it's definitely a mix. So I saw that whole thing, too. And that was the first thing when I, when I read that in the, in the agenda was, that's a lot of change, that's never going to happen all at once. So just, we, I hear you, we hear you, we understand. So that's not going to be next week, we're going to demolish everything, it's a brand-new park, so. And the second is to Andrew and to the chamber and to Bill. I really appreciate the conscientious, conscientious use and application of the Oprah process. I, I hear the, the concerns, I, I get those, too. But the, and I think Andrew said, for a long time, Manistee was known as difficult to do business with, and that we're open for business, we're willing to listen, we're willing to talk. We're not going to give, as, as, you know, Councilmember Rosca said, you know, automatically 12 years, it's not an automatic, you know, a tax abatement. But it sure is nice to see the vision of, of Manistee come to life and continue to move forward. So I, I do appreciate the effort that everybody's put into that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Reddits.
He took all my stuff. But, um, thank you.
I just got a question. How much is the Water Works building listed for?
It's not currently listed. We're looking at doing an RFP right now. So it's not, it's not a.
Put a sign on a property that we don't have listed, so.
And I think we have to tell the commercial real estate person that, that hasn't been something that they've been advertising.
I'm just, I'm just asking because we can't put a sign on a property that's not listed. So that's all, there's not a sign out front, and it's not marketed. I don't have anything else. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.